We'll call the meeting to order. Stand for the pledge. Right, we have before us the consent agenda, which is the minutes of the council meeting, March 4th, library board, March 11th, park and rec commission was March 12th, planning commission was March 11th, HRA was March 12th, telecom commission is February 10th, utility commission was February 27th. We need to add the community center meeting minutes, which I'm not sure the date.
They're handed out.
Yeah, they, we got another packet of those.
March 10th.
March 10th. And then the regular bills are all in the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any department heads like to speak at this time? Jason Sikora.
Jason Skarletrick, utility manager. I just wanted to give you guys a quick update on our generation testing. As we canceled it, if you didn't notice, with the power did not go out on the 16th. We were able to work some things around with some engineering and not take the town down. So the testing was performed Wednesday during the day. All the testing went very, really well, except one of the new engines had a computer problem. So it just, it just turned off. But we were able to get all the testing done with it and it's since been repaired. So everything's operating as it should. So, yeah.
Does anyone have any questions for Jason? Thanks for the update. Next, we have Homeland Security Emergency Management Award Presentations, and we have Kevin Reed here. And I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy to be here tonight. We normally give out awards in February and on our issue, we had a little snafu in community communication. So happy to make the drive down. We have two awards for tonight that, of the six awards we present yearly, we do an outstanding community partner award, and we also do community contribution to emergency management. So we have two awards. I'll start with our first award, and some of these words are based on the nominations, which I can call out Paul. There he is. Usually when he's standing up, I can see him, but he's sitting down there. So we have an award today for Mayor Hillary Mathis, and that award basically is, she was an integral part of, and I think there was a chicken discussion at some point in time, but, and the quote was, "My work with the awardee during the June floods started with chickens." Actually, 30 chickens surrounded by water. And I take that quote because it was one of those moments, as I was reading all these nominations, going, I gotta figure out what the rest of that story is. So I had to come down and do that. So she jumped into action with her expertise and her contacts as a community organizer, and we're able to connect chicken owners and the help that they needed. Not only stopped there, but continued to coordinate sandbagging, volunteers, muck outs, donations, and debris. And for her outstanding work during the June floods of 2024, we're gonna present her with the Outstanding Community Partner Award. So, you can clap, it's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your help. Hoping that the recovery's going well. I'll leave this box here for you. I give you the, oh, Hillary, I gave you the wrong one, sorry. I put the wrong name on top of the wrong list. It's been a long day, this is what happens. It's what happens when you get out in clean air versus city air. You start, your brain doesn't quite understand what's going on with that. And then we had another outstanding community partner award, and that is for Tiffany Lamb. There she is over there. She was an integral partner with, during the floods of June of last year, stepped up, took a huge role in the area of individual assistance, helping FEMA understand the magnitude and the impact here, not only in the city of Wyndham, but also in Cottonwood County. Helped with messaging and translation so that those who needed help could get information in a way that they could use it a lot easier in an extremely stressful time. And she believes that economic development is more than just business, bringing business into the area, but it also includes having people to work for those businesses. And for her efforts for the, keeping the people in the city of Wyndham, we present this award for outstanding community partnership to Tiffany Lamb. You gotta come all the way out. Get a picture. Make sure I got the right name.
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me down and congratulations. And thanks for all your help, and if there's anything we can do in your recovery, just let us know. Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin, for coming down, and thank you, Paul, for the nomination. If you guys didn't see it, Kyle Polatsky was also nominated and awarded, I'm not sure the title of his award, but. Yeah. So thank you guys so much for the recognition, and thanks for making the drive for us.
Thank you for what you guys do for your community. It helps us in what we help you.
Yeah, thank you. We next up have public comment by Mike Laurie. You're up.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mike, the, our traditional, I don't know what you would call it, kind of, maybe not protocol for this is, the public comment is five minutes in length. I know that you were here before, and we extended the time on that. When I look at our agenda, I would like to stick around the five-minute mark this evening, unless anyone has any other discussion to follow that.
I, can I say something first?
Yeah.
I, I dropped by the library and the three main books that I recommended to each one of you now, two months ago, and after our first conversation, and this is the last time I will come in, because I can see how happy people are to see me. It's like I just shot your dog or something. But I'm here to share something that I think will be, some, some, a short synopsis that'll be, I think, be very helpful for people on this topic, that is, that nobody wants to talk about, which is vaccine injuries and treatments for it. And I've spent weeks, I've spent weeks going through, through the material, and I, I'm not gonna talk for that long, but I would like just your patience one last time. And I'd like to have about 15 minutes if you'll give it to me. I don't think you'll talk about anything more vital for human life and health tonight, actually.
Does anyone want to make a recommendation on the time allotted here?
I'm, Mike, I, I'm really interested in it, however, I really think that this is probably the wrong place to do it. You know, there must be something, a senator or somebody that you can get ahold of that would certainly help, you know, help you, because I, I think it is important, very important.
I would be interested to know the titles of your books that you have, in some written form even, even a note?
It was all sent to you in emails.
Yeah, I read, I read that, but I meant to have it in just a, a short little, like, just book titles, something like that. I'll look for those book titles again, but that's just gonna take some time.
I can certainly write those down before I leave tonight. And out of all fairness to protocol, I think we still should stick to the five-minute rule. I'm sorry, but that's what we, we handle for everybody else, and I know you've got a lot of information you want to get out, but we still got a lot of other stuff we've got to cover and. Okay, so I'll, I'll keep it to five minutes, Sam. Thank you. I think, I think that's exactly what I, that's exactly what I saw in 2006 and 2007 when I taught in Wuhan, China. That's the way you suppress student, citizen information, is to use protocols and procedures against free speech. And I think it's absolutely shameful that that happens in this city council. And all the niceties aside, free speech is under attack in this country, and I think it's, I think it's vitally important. I think our country is lost without it, and there's a lot of people suffering out there. Since I got into this issue, there, I, I was so, I was so careful at the start in my reporting, I did not want to overstate anything, because I don't want to inflate anything or cause any fear or panic, which I got accused of. I kept my numbers low. Okay, these three books, Expired by Dr. Claire Craig, you have this all on emails, you've had it for two months. The Wuhan Cover-Up by Robert F. Kennedy Jr. This shows that the coronavirus has been undergoing gain-of-function research for over 20 years, and the vaccines for, the military has been researching over 20 years. This is a very thick book and hard to get through. I, I said this in my emails. I tried to synop, you know, give you a synopsis on these things. But for the people listening in Wyndham, that's really what I came for. I, I, by this point, I don't expect you're gonna do anything. I don't think you're gonna use your power, but I, there may be one or two people out there who I can help. And that's, that's, that's why I bring these things, because I asked the library to get this one. This book, I'd say out of the three, for the common, for the common average citizen, The Pfizer Papers by Naomi Wolf. Okay, this is Pfizer's own data. This is Pfizer's own data, and it's only $22 on Amazon, and it's organized into a series of 34 specific reports. Have any of you bought this book by chance, yet? Okay, the library, the librarian Nancy Sazman was really nice this last week. She said, "I'm gonna get it so that people who don't have this," and I, I recommend these, these too, because I just don't know if people really read books anymore, and I don't mean to be a snob, I'm a former English professor, you know? I mean, I understand people don't have time to read 200 and 400-page books that are thickly documented, but this is a complex subject that we're talking here, and if you don't, you can't, you can't get it all on Twitter. And there's so much misinformation in this society right now. I quit my job, and I, I saw it as my obligation, when I quit my job, to my wife especially. If I'm wrong, I'm gonna apologize. As a Christian, if I make a mistake and I'm, I'm inflating something or lying, I will apologize, and I said that to my wife. If I find out that I'm wrong and I just, I quit my job for nothing, and Donna Bosberg's injury is fake, or it doesn't matter, but what I've found is that the, the evidence is overwhelming, that there are tens of thousands of these injuries out there. And people are in desperate need of wondering where to go, and why can't they go get it at Sanford in Wyndham? Because the pressure on the doctors from the pharmaceutical companies and the procedures to prescribe something like, like ivermectin, for example, for a turbo cancer, which is one of the results of the DNA fragments that are now found in many, many batches of these vaccines, people have to know this, so that they can go out and find, because there are treatments, there are alternative treatments. And I'll say this, Dr. Peter McCullough, who I, who I, in the first email I sent you, I said, "You have to follow him on X, if anybody else, because he can lead you to all the other sources that you can look at for yourself to find the best treatment." And he has a treatment that he sells, okay? So anytime somebody's selling something, you have to be careful, obviously, right? But, but I do believe he's doing it in a sincere effort to help people, because he's, he's had thousands of vaccine-injured patients. They come to him, and he's come up with this McCullough protocol for it, and other people have taken to it. So I want people to know that, Wyndham people, if you're, what I, what has happened in my family and friend group, I now have six different people that I know personally that are struggling with this. And I don't know the people out there listening, you know, if they have this in their, I'm not saying that my anecdotal evidence is true for everyone else, but I've run into so many people now, because I came, kind of became a target for this, that it's just out there. And the way, the way I, the way I think is, you know, the reason I recommended it the first time, and I know it makes people uncomfortable, the truth sets you free. The fourth book is the Bible, and this is the book, I believe, more than anything that a human writes. I stand my life on this book, and it says that the truth sets you free. And it also says in Galatians 6:7, "God is not mocked; whatsoever thou soweth you also shall reap." And when you have a government system, Jim, you say, "Why can't, why can't the governors, why aren't the governors and senators doing it?" Because your big brother, your, your mentors in government aren't doing jack sprat to, to cover this issue because of the liability issues and the money that's involved with it. The pharmaceutical industry is overwhelmingly powerful industry, and it has its hands in everything, and it, it has its hands on our local doctors. The reason I'm saying this is you guys do have agency. Your hospital board and you, you own the hospital. You know what a blessing that is? Do you know what power you have in actually being able, in actually being able to have an influence on how your care takes place in this community and offer alternative cares for this community? I'm not, I'm not coming to be, I don't think I'm a bad guy. I don't dislike anyone here. When I started this job, when I sat in that chair and I was the reporter, I had a traumatic brain injury six years ago. I was in such rough shape the first time I tried to leave this building, I didn't know which way to go. I couldn't go, I couldn't remember my way back to the citizen office. And this isn't about me and my traumatic brain injury, but it was a miracle and the patience that Steve Nasby showed, showed me in this job when I, when I was trying to learn it. He had no idea how injured I was and what I was trying to do. The Lord did an unbelievably powerful work in my life in this town, and I'm thankful to the residents of Wyndham, and it's one of the reasons I'm here. Okay?
I'm sorry, Mike, we are at five minutes. I mean, I'm sorry.
Okay, and I, I respect that, that you want to go on. I just, I just, I just encourage you, I, I will, I will say this, too. I want to say one more thing. I was a coward during my job. I, one, there's one time I want you to know about, and the paper has a right to do this, but when, but when the hospital board put all the plans forward for the new hospital, and it was gonna cost 30-some million dollars, and they were gonna fund it at first, and I first wrote the story on it, I asked them for images of the hospital, because I just know, because I've built houses, you have to have the engineering and the plans ahead of time. They had all the drawings for the hospital, and I asked them to, I asked the people at, at Sanford, up at the Wyndham Area Hospital, to give them to me, and they said, "No, we're not, we're not going to release those." And so I said, "This was my training in journalism, okay, we'll just write a note at the end of the story that you refused to give the images of the brand-new hospital, okay, for the public." Because, I said, "The city of Wyndham owns this hospital, Sanford does not own the hospital. You should let the public see everything associated with it, not just the floor plans, the images and everything." And, and so I, I just was gonna leave it at that. Before I even got back to the citizen office, Wyndham Hospital had called, had called down to Trevor Sleddy and Ron Larson to shape me up. We don't, and they told me, "We don't work like that around here. We're not gonna, we're not gonna demand anything and do the images." And I said, "But doesn't the public ever..." Well, but it's their, it's their newspaper. But I should have known then, that that's the way journalism is done. That's called hometown journalism. Okay? And, and that's called favoring and advertising, and I want you to know that. It was months, and I can give you the names and the emails, and you can go down and ask the citizen people, and you can ask two people at the hospital if you want to. I can give you the names, I have the evidence for this, I'm not making a false claim. But you should know that you did not get the full information upfront on that hospital, and you should talk to Dan Ortman about why, because I never got to do the story, but Dan Ortman, if he wants to actually step up and, and say some things, he can. So I wanted, I wanted you to know that before I leave here, too. And I have a Substack, it's called Mike Laurie, I did it for this. If any citizens, you want to come in and throw tomatoes at me and make comments, or if you actually want to know something and you want to subscribe, it's free. And I'm gonna write about this, and I'll wrap it up there, because I understand your time is limited here, and I also understand you don't want to touch it, but I think you should. And when I came to this job, I thought, my wife didn't think I'd last a week. I said, "I'm gonna pray for these people," and it wasn't Hillary and, and Jason, because you weren't here yet. But that's what I did a lot of the first, the first weeks. I said, "If I'm, if I'm not gonna make it, I may be too stupid, I don't have enough memory to do it, at least I'm gonna pray for these people in this city." And that's what I did, for every, I've been praying for some of you people a long time. And I've been praying for you guys, too, and I'll continue to do that. I'm not your enemy. I'm your friend.
No, no, I don't, I don't think you are, myself. Mike, can you give me that, the title, that red book one more time?
The Pfizer Papers by Naomi Wolf. And, and if this was in the university, this book would be over $100. They've made it cheap and inexpensive for a reason. I encourage anybody, because there's a lot of fear when you don't know what to do. The two main symptoms people are feeling are a lot of arthritis and muscle pain.
You know, Mike, I think that you mentioned the person's name who could probably really help you, and he wrote one of those books. And that's Robert Kennedy. I would do everything I could to contact him, because he, right now, he's, well, he's doing everything he can, and it would probably be a good idea to let him know about the lady in Westbrook and so forth.
Jim, you barely want to listen to me, much less Robert F. Kennedy. I mean, it's a nice suggestion, but.
I haven't had supper yet either. I don't eat till I get home, so. But, no, and it's, and it's not that, Mike, it's not that at all. I would love to hear it all and, and everything, because I believe it. I didn't get the vaccination, and I won't. And it's not the first one I didn't get either, so, I mean, I agree with you, but this is the wrong place at the wrong time to do it.
Okay, and I, and I mean, to me, I don't even get into vaccinated, unvaccinated, because it doesn't matter. And with your political party, it doesn't matter if you're hurt, you're hurt. If you need help, you need help, and as our fellow Americans, we should do everything we can for them, that's my opinion.
Mike, we thank you for your time.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have the community center projects, which are the vestibule addition and the sound system. Tim, I mean, I'm sorry, Tim is not here. Steve, would you like to handle this for us?
Yep, I'll pinch-hit for Tim. He's out of town right now, but I think Scott and Jim probably can jump in, too. They're probably at the commission meeting for the community center. The first project they're looking at is the fourth set of doors, there's four doors that face the parking lot, that go out into the large parking lot. The building was built in 1999, opened in November of that year. Those doors have kind of shifted a little bit, and they're not super energy efficient, so the community center board had looked at pulling those doors out and replacing all those doors. In doing so, they got a quote for that. One of the other ideas came up was to make that side entrance look like the front entrance, where there's two sets of doors and a little vestibule in the middle. And so they looked at that and priced that out, and that was actually cheaper to do that and build that second set of doors coming into the building. So that's what they are recommending. They quoted that, they got a couple of quotes. The quote they're recommending is from Worthington Glass to build that interior vestibule. It would be two doors that come into the building from that. That quote was $7,814.11, and they are recommending that that be approved, Worthington Glass be the vendor, and that it be paid for out of the building funds that are sitting in the community center account. So that's the first recommendation, and I'll let Scott or Jim jump in if you got more.
The reason they wanted, because in the wintertime, the snow blows, makes drift in there, and if you put another set of doors, that'll act like as a, a buffer to, to slow the stuff down, and then plus, during the summertime, when the air conditioner's coming, the window actually blow from the north straight through, and it'll draw air back in, so it'll draw, bring heat back into the building. So if you put those two in, it'll act like a buffer and slow it down. And then when Worthington came over, they had some other issues with a few other doors, and they agreed to fix those beings that were there. So that was one of the reasons they, we accepted the quote with them guys. And plus, both quotes are just about identical to each other. And with that, I'll make a motion to accept a vestibule addition for the community center?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, they have a second recommendation in the packet. The second recommendation that the community center board and director are making is that the sound system be replaced at the community center. Again, that's original to the building. Over the years, they've had some issues with it. So right now, they're having some volume issues with it. The power amplifiers had some issues, CD drive is broken, and have some buzzing and other interference issues. And so, again, they went out, they discussed it, they looked at it, they got three quotes to replace that sound system, and they're recommending that that sound system be replaced. It costs us $17,808.70, quote from Midstates Audio and Visual, and their proposed way to pay for that project is they got a very generous donation from Bob Byers that they've been looking at using for some projects up there. So their recommendation is to fund that sound system, one half from the Bob Byers donation, and then the other half coming from that community center building fund. So it'd be $8,904.35 out of each fund.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I was just curious on if we know any particulars, like is this a, this new system that is proposed, how much it will increase the quality? I mean, how, how, how much is that, I know it's a lot of difference, but for the public?
The system that's in there right now is, it's 20-some years old, and it's, it's been there for, I mean, it's seen its life. And with the system they're putting in, they're just replacing one of the, I, I'm not a guru on all this head station and all this stuff, but what they're replacing is one of the servers and then a CD drive thing, and then there's gonna be two CDs they're gonna put in there. So instead of having a mega one, the, everybody always wanted to sell them something big and spendier, but this person that come with this bid said, "We won't have to do no electrical work, they'll use all existing wires, and they won't have to add nothing to the building." So that's what cut down on the price of it. And they said it's gonna outdo the old one by many years and keep it going as long as it, we need for what we need up there. And they said it won't take them hardly, no time at all to get it installed and taken care of. So that, that was one of the reasons we went with, they went with the, the person that did this one.
And I think also to cut the cost, there were two spots that had exterior controls for the sound system that they, they did not need or utilize very often, so they eliminated that, and I think that dropped the price down considerably in that, so.
I think also they had handheld mics, and they were having an awful lot of problems with them. I believe they're gonna go with headsets now, so it would work a lot better, so they got their hands free or whatever.
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
Uh, yeah, I think, you know, having had presenters and using the system up there, that it was very much like when you bring a big presenter that comes in, they're used to wireless clip-on mics so they can walk around the crowd and speak. And it really limited, you know, how they could move around. And then they had to almost like eat the microphone is what Tim would tell them to be able to be heard. And so this will be tremendous for, you know, people speaking and presenting to be able to use, you know, the wireless. So I think it's a very good idea.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And now we will see Matt Fast to hit the planning commission recommendations on the conditional use permit for the short-term rental property. Matt and Mary, I'm sorry. Here's Mary too.
Good evening. Uh, Matt Fast, Building and Zoning Department.
Mary Hansen, uh, Administrative Assistant.
Dean and Kathleen Kretsch, uh, twenty-three seventy-two Douglas Street, filed an application requesting a conditional use permit to allow the use of their property as a short-term rental property. Notice of the hearing on this app, notice of the public hearing on this application was published in the February twenty-sixth Citizen and was mailed to property owners within three hundred and fifty feet of the applicant's property. In the summer of twenty twenty-four, the city council approved the new ordinance covering short-term rental properties. Pursuant to this ordinance, a short-term rental property is allowed in any residential district and requires a conditional use permit. The ordinance provides that a responsible party, either the owners or their agent, is designated while the dwelling unit is being rented and will be able to respond to issues twenty-four, excuse me, twenty-four hours a day. The contact information for the owners and any agent is to be provided to the city. The planning commission found that the applicants complied with the city's ordinance and recommended that the city council approve this application with the following conditions. The dwelling unit shall be inspected and licensed by the Minnesota Department of Health and shall comply with building and fire codes, city ordinances, and state and federal laws and regulations. The property owner shall comply with the parking, lighting, and signage requirements and the posting of required information set forth in City Code Section one five-two point three-five-five. An agent, who may be the owner, shall be designated as the party responsible while the dwelling unit is being rented and will be able to respond to issues twenty-four hours a day. Contact information for the agents shall be provided to the city.
Uh, planning commission reviewed this and recommended approvals, is that correct?
Yes.
What is it gonna be used for? Just to rental for somebody to live or?
These are, these are like Airbnbs. Uh, it's rental, short-term rental for a period of no more than fourteen consecutive days.
Does anybody have any questions or comments from Matt or anything? Or can we get a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the short-term rental property at twenty-three seventy-two Douglas Street?
I would make a motion to the same.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I am wondering, um, is this the first one that we've done in our community since this has changed? Okay, cuz I had thought I heard of another one. And so that's why I'm questioning if we've gone through this process before or if this is the first. Okay, I like the idea.
This is the first one. Uh, what we would ask, if you could add to the motion, uh, subject to those three conditions.
Yes, I'd be fine with that. Subject to those three conditions, which are again, so I am clear.
The dwelling unit shall be inspected and licensed by the Minnesota Department of Health and shall comply with building and fire codes, city ordinances, and state and federal laws and regulations. The second, the property owner shall comply with the parking, lighting, and signage requirements and the posting of required information set forth in City Code Section one fifty-two point three-five-five. And the third, an agent, who may be the owner, shall be designated as a party responsible while in the dwelling unit is being rented and will be able to respond to issues twenty-four hours a day. Contact information for the agent shall be provided to the city.
Yes, sir. Adding those three amendments to my motion. Is there a second for that?
Motion made and seconded with an added amendment. Any further discussion?
I just think this is a really good idea. I think a lot of people are tending to do this instead of going to hotels to feel more like a home setting. And so, um, it's kinda nice to have something like that in our Wyndham area. So thank you.
I agree. That's very cool. I know my dad and my uncle's coming down to hunt and staying in Airbnbs. So now I'll send them to you. Anything further from anyone? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Then Matt, you can hang out. And up next, we have the first reading of ordinance number two hundred, second series Cannabis and Hemp Business.
The Minnesota Legislature adopted Minnesota Statutes, Chapter three forty-two, entitled Cannabis. This chapter also created the Minnesota Office of Cannabis Management, or OCM, to make rules, establish policy, and exercise its regulatory authority over the industry. Minnesota Statute, Section three forty-two point one-three, provides that "A local government, local unit of government may adopt reasonable restrictions on the time, place, and manner of the operation of a cannabis business, provided that such restrictions do not prohibit the establishment or operation of cannabis businesses." The OCM will issue licenses to businesses and then a local gu, unit of government will is, issue registrations. The Wyndham City Council determined that Cottonwood County should take the lead on the registration of cannabis businesses, compliance inspections, and enforcement. The county commissioners agreed that Cottonwood County would accept this role and are in the process of finalizing their new ordinance number forty-three. Proposed ordinance number two hundred, second series, creates new city so, code sections one twenty point zero-one through one twenty point two, entitled Cannabis and Hemp Businesses, which contain provisions that are specific to the city of Wyndham. Building and zoning staff did extensive research of Chapter three forty-two of Minnesota Statutes, OCM guidelines, and ordinances from other cities. The planning commission reviewed proposed language, posed questions, and suggested provisions at meetings in December twenty twenty-four and February twenty twenty-five. The Park and Recreation Commission approved proposed language for temporary cannabis events and the use of Mayflower Park is the only site for these events. City eternal, city attorney Ron Tramel has reviewed the proposed new city code sections and recommended no changes. A public hearing nos, notice was published in the February twenty-sixth Citizen and copies of the ordinance were posted on the city's website and available for review in City Hall and in the library. On March eleventh, the planning hel, commission held a public hearing on the proposed new city code sections. Also at the March eleventh meeting, the planning commission approved a motion recommending that the city council conduct the two readings of the new ordinance and thereafter approve the ordinance.
I have, uh, just one clarification question. Um, in the Minnesota Statutes, uh, three forty-two point one-three, uh, says under C that, uh, the business, um, cannot be within one thousand feet of a school. And I know that we have five hundred feet as a thing. Is that the, was that the county's recommendation, why we have it at five hundred?
Yes, um, the county recommended five hundred for all of those locations. And so our ordinance kind of patterns theirs.
Is there a motion to approve the first reading, ordinance number two hundred, second series Cannabis and Hemp Business, adding new sections to the city code?
I'll make a res, uh, resolution to make the, for the first reading of the ordinance, number two hundred dash second series.
I'll second. Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. One more, you might wanna, well, I don't know who's gonna take this up. Next, we have joint powers agreement, county and city regulation of cannabis.
This will be me.
Okay.
Okay, um, so, uh, when this was being discussed, uh, last fall, uh, with the prior council and even before that in the summer, uh, when the state's, uh, cannabis law came out, uh, we had discussions with, like, Cottonwood County about, uh, licensing or registration of the businesses, enforcement, compliant checks, those kind of things. And the discussion was that, um, in the event one of these, uh, businesses popped up outside city limits, the county would have to do regulation. If the one happened in Wyndham, there, we would be doing regulation. Mountain Lake, potentially, one there, they're doing regulation. So rather than have a hodgepodge of rules and compliance and enforcement, uh, we talked with the county and the county agreed to take on that role, to do the registrations of the businesses and then do enforcement, compliance checks. And so this joint powers agreement essentially delegates those responsibilities to the county in an agreement with the city of Wyndham. So again, the city attorney has looked at this and, um, this is okay with our PD is that the, uh, county takes on those responsibilities. So, um, the ordinance that we just passed will become, uh, referenced in the county's ordinance. As far as the zoning things, that's on us. So if a business comes and says, I wanna locate here, then we pull our ordinance out and say, are you within five hundred feet? Those type of things. But as far as registering the business and, like I said, compliance inspections, that will be the county's purview. So, but this joint powers agreement memorializes that, those actions.
I'll make a resolution to accept the joint powers agreement.
I'll second. Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Steve. Next up is a call for a public hearing on a residential tax abatement at sixteen sixty-three Seventeenth Street. And Tiffany Lamb, our EDA director, will take that over for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Tiffany Lamb, Economic Development Director. And tonight, uh, I have an action item for you on a residential tax abatement program, uh, application that we received on behalf of Boars Guard Construction. Uh, this relates to the address sixteen sixty-three Seventeenth Street. And for this, uh, new, uh, home, we're looking at an estimated market value of five hundred thousand. And since we've set a, uh, existing cap of three hundred twenty thousand, we would basically be looking at the maximum, uh, residential tax abatement for this. Uh, that ends up coming out to approximately one thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars and three cent, uh, per year based on twenty twenty-four tax rates and then a five-year total estimated tax abatement by the city of nine thousand two hundred twenty dollars and fifteen cent, uh, also based on this year's tax rates. So at this, um, time, uh, what I am requesting is just a call for public hearing. That would be, uh, presumptively April first, that we would be, uh, looking at, moving forward on that. Uh, so we have a, a resolution. Calling for public hearing would be what we would need for that.
I'll make a resolution for the public hearing for the tax abatement.
Motion made and seconded. Now we'll do a roll call for the resolution.
Quaid.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
And that resolution is approved. Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you all.
Park and Rec Commission, recommendations concerning Island Park in Wyndham. Uh, conversation on the dog park relocation and the cabin removal. And we have our parks and streets superintendent, John Kitzenberg, here.
Good evening, all. Um, talked to Park and Rec and everything about the relocation of the dog park. They had the only stipulation, as long as it stays in Island Park. So we got a couple of options to move it straight to the south or depending on what happens with the pool, if we put it up on top of the pool so it's kinda little less subject to flooding and everything, depending on what happens to the pool. So they are good with that. So we can kinda move forward with everything on the commission for planning and zoning.
I'll make a resolution to accept the dog park relocation.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I would just say, you know, some people are aware, um, when that extra material is gonna be put up around Island Park, the park will have to temporarily be closed during that time for that. Also, obviously, the dog park is gonna be closed during that time. And then when it's safe to be, allow people back in that area, we can have the dog park relocated and then it'll be open again. Um, and then, you know, depending on future planning for the pool issue down the road, we can look at relocating again if we need to. But just so you know, that there will be a dog park. Um, and when it's gonna be relocated, you wouldn't be able to get into Island Park anyways because of the construction movement of the earth happening down there.
I feel like I asked this at the planning and zoning meeting, but do you have any idea, like, the, not saying start or stop date of construction, but how long it might? Or, I mean, I don't, I don't know if it's gonna start spring, fall, next year. I don't know, but how long might that take, that the dog park would be closed?
That is a good question. It just depends on how far and fast things keep moving along.
Does anyone else have any questions or discussion on the dog park relocation?
Uh, one more, um, that you may not know the answer to. But, uh, once the berm, if it passes and everything goes forward and it's up and, uh, and doing its job, uh, how long would it take to actually move that fencing to the new location? Is that something that would take a, a week or two weeks, do you think?
Yeah, it shouldn't take too long. Um, the plan was that the street department pull it all out and everything and we'll have a contractor come back in and replace it. So depending on the timeline, when the berm and everything gets done and everything, we'll hopefully get lined up. So once the berm is completed, we can start reinstalling the fence and get it all functional again.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. John, you could discuss the cabin removal now.
Well, let's start with clearing up some problems we've been having already by a certain person. Um, I talked to historical, Historical Society in Wyndham here, talked to Linda and everything. They're having a meeting Monday. So they're gonna discuss the cabin, to see if they have any wants or needs or any desire for the cabin. And if that falls through and everything, I got Nick's number in Jackson. So that's where the cabin actually originated, is Chris Deanna Township in Jackson. So I'm gonna reach out to them. After that, that's gonna be kinda up to you guys in the council of what we kinda wanna do. If we try to sell it or if we try to give it away or if somebody wants a thing or something. It is not getting demoed right at the moment. So just to clear up the miscommunication and everything else. In previous, when we talked about it with the flood a couple of years ago, I have reached out to Northern Bedrock Historical Preservation Corpse and I have not received any information. I called them a while back again and I got ghosted again on that. So we have been doing our due diligence into trying to check on this thing and see what's going on. It is not a historical piece of property for Cottonwood County. Any questions?
Just a comment. This is the second time we run this one up around here for that building itself. And I personally went down and looked at it myself. And if you look at some of the cheeking around all them logs, it's all coming out. Due to the last flood we had, it rotted out some of them logs. So the, the building itself is tilting. And I'm afraid if you get some kids climbing around or something on there or pulling on some of them logs, that whole works could come on down on top of them. And I'd rather... And I'd rather see it gone than somebody get hurt because of it. I understand people cling to things like that, but again, there's no really historical memorabilia from Wyndham besides the people that know and understand the original nation of the cabin itself. But like I said, this is the second time we brung it up in front of the city council, and we, we talked about it and talked about it, and the public, the Parks and Recs, the committee recommended it twice to removal. So if, if push comes to shove, you can't find nobody, John, then we have to, as, as a city, to try to keep people safe, just to get rid of it. Because there are vandalism people going down and wrecking it, and they're gonna get hurt down there. And I'd rather nobody get hurt.
Correct. And like I said, with the last flood and everything, I don't know how many people seen that big tree trunk that was hitting up against that building there for the cabin, that was kept on working it. And like Scott says, it has shifted more. So we have looked at it, we have looked into other avenues of this thing. So if anybody's got any ideas, you can give me a call at the street department and come down and we'll have a chat about it, and we can go look at this thing. So I'll leave that up to you guys and the citizens of Wyndham.
This really does.
No, not as far as I know. We're gonna explore a few more avenues and everything else, and I'll be coming back to talk about this, and we'll get some more recommendations from Park and Rec again.
If it's the city's responsibility, I'd say the city should just do what they want, as far as I'm concerned. It's not historical. I mean, yeah, it's a, Davy Crockett didn't live there, and Daniel Boone, he sure didn't. So I, you know, I don't know why it would be, it's been for how long, you still can't find out anything. Who wants it? I sure don't, but...
Well, unless the council wants to make a recommendation.
Just a quick question. Has anyone contacted any of these, you know, these historic sites where they do like reenactments, and they have old buildings that they bring onto site? Have, have any of those people, groups been contacted?
I don't know about that. I can ask this Historical Society a little more about that and see if they have any. But like I brought up to the last time, a couple years ago, when we first started talking about it, she said she didn't have any money. So like, say, after it goes through the board Monday again, and we get a recommendation there, I'll explore a couple more avenues and come back to you and give me my report.
I'll make, I'll make a recommendation. If you don't find nothing out on Monday, we take it down. So I'll make a recommendation to remove this, the cabin before somebody gets hurt.
And I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further, to actually remove the cabin if we don't find anything out on Monday? Is there any discussion? I'm gonna jump in on this one. I did read a lot of commentary on social media today, and there are some community members that are riled up. I think it is maybe the wording, you know, the, the Park and Rec Commission made the recommendation that the cabin be removed because of safety concerns. And it was damaged during, I mean, I stood on the bridge and watched that tree you speak of was caught under there, and then went and hit the cabin. I haven't personally seen the cabin lately, but I think maybe we should... I mean, there are some people that are fired up, and I know that we can't please everyone, but I think maybe we give it a few more days after Monday. If you need help calling anybody, I'm happy to do that. I'd maybe like, I'd just like to see it have some more time. We could figure out what the Historical Society said their board meeting is Monday night. They can jump on it, we can check with Jackson County. Again, I'm more than willing to make phone calls. Is there an option that if they don't want it, we could offer it to the public to take it all or nothing? I mean, we can't piece this thing out, but if someone really wants to save it and pick it up and haul it at their own expense, is that an option?
I believe in the time I've been here that we had the discussion before, and it was on social media, and people didn't wanna see it taken down. And we went through a lot of different things. We talked with Jackson County, we talked to the Historical Center. We had it where pretty much like anybody in the community want it, like we'd pretty much give it away type of thing. And we had no, nobody come forward at that point. We were actually seeking some people out, saying, "Hey, don't you want it? Don't you want it?" And we, we couldn't get rid of it. And then I think, you know, years ago, we talked about all the bats in there and all the excrement, I don't know, whatever stuff that was in, that it, health hazard is if kids or somebody tried to get in there as well. And back then, I thought that should just be gone. I mean, if it's not a Cottonwood County or a city of Wyndham thing, and we've already tried multiple times to, like, say, anybody want it, and, you know, and people didn't come forward before, and it's been in the social media now again, if somebody doesn't come forward very, very quickly, it just needs to be done. And really, I mean, even if somebody takes it, you're gonna need to do some work on it and major cleaning.
I would say you would want something in writing prior to your next meeting, so maybe push it to the 1st of April, which is your next meeting. And if you don't have anything to act on at that time, as far as donating it, giving it away, whatever you choose to do, then you execute your plan, would be my suggestion.
I will make a resolution to what he said.
It'd just be a, a, a motion to defer action to your April 1st council meeting if you haven't received any offers to take that cabin off your hands.
I'll second.
What he said.
Okay, there's a motion made and seconded to defer action on the cabin removal until our meeting, next meeting on April 1st. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, John, and I will help make phone calls and use social media. We'll make it happen. Thank you, sir. Next up is the memorandum of understanding between the Wyndham Ambulance Service and Minnesota West Community and Technical College. We've got our ambulance director, Kristen Porth, here to speak on that.
Kristen Porth, Wyndham Ambulance. Just a quick overview. I was reached out to by the Minnesota West Fire and EMS Coordinator, Jake, to do an agreement to allow EMT students in Jackson to do ride-alongs with our ambulance service for part of their schooling. They're required to do, like, so many ride-alongs with a ambulance service. And I'm not sure if they have other contracts or not, but in the past, they've had troubles getting agreements or working with other ambulance services to allow students to do that, and it's required for their schooling. So he reached out to me and asked if I would be interested, and then sent me a memorandum of understanding between Minnesota West and our ambulance service. They sent it to Steve, and he had Ron Schrammel review it, and also the League of Minnesota Cities for Insurance. Everything come back fine on that. The allowing the students to ride with us would still be my decision. So if it didn't work for us, if they were extremely busy and just couldn't take on students, it would be my discretion. Or if they rode along once or twice and it wasn't working out, we could, we're not binding by any means. We don't have to accept. It's my discretion. And this agreement would just go till the end of the year. And most of the EMS classes are done now, so it wouldn't be until fall again, until students would ride along. So I'm just asking for approval to allow students to ride along with our ambulance service if they reach out to us.
I'll make a recommendation to accept the Wyndham Ambulance Service moratorium? Memorandum?
I would second. Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those, oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, you know, what you're doing there is great, because you're getting new, new people involved in what the stuff we do around here and, and your service. And you were saying you needed some help anyway sometime, so new blood coming in, training people at an early age. I think it's a wonderful thing that you're doing to help young kids get involved in stuff like this, and I wanna thank you.
Also, there is no cost to the city for this. It's just, they'll put in their time like the rest of us have done in the past, so it doesn't cost us anything. Yeah, and recruiting, you know, we're always looking for more EMTs, and with our living quarters up there, if somebody lives in Jackson and wants to drive up here, or here in Lake and wants to come here and stay, you know, we all look at those opportunities, so...
Insurance-wise, we'd be all covered through the league and so forth, so we wouldn't have no responsibility as far as if they, if they got hurt or whatever.
Yeah, each party would be responsible for their own people and their own actions. So we did have the League Insurance Trust look at this, and they signed off on it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Kristen. 2024 Annual Report. All the department heads turned in their annual reports. Did everybody read all of that? It was a big, I opened the packet and it was 222 pages, and I was like, whoa! But, yeah. Does anyone have any discussion or comments on the annual report?
I just say, thank you to all the department heads for putting all the time in to do it. I think it's real good. The narratives are very well done and, you know, give a very good description of what folks are doing. We have a little friendly competition, as you can see, between some of them to improve upon each year on year. The PD has set the gold standard for it, so everybody's chasing them. But thank you for that. There's a lot of good information in there, you know, you know, how many books did the library lend out? How many books read the library? Those kind of trivia questions, and that information is in here. So encourage citizens, take a look at it and, and see what your civil servants are doing.
And exactly. If, if the public wants to know what's going on with your city and all the monies going around and stuff like that, there's a really good spot to go find out. There's no hiding nothing, no nothing. It's all in black and white right in front of you. If you wanna spend the time, there it is, right in front of you. So I recommend you, you look at it.
It's even colored with pictures and graphs. Does anyone else have anything on the annual reports? Wait, I have to know if there's like an award for the best annual report.
There, there isn't at this time, but maybe that could be arranged.
I think that should be arranged. But they, it was really neat to read, and I do stress to the public to check this out. Everything is right there. The police, you did a really good job. Lots of really cool pictures and infographics in the telecom. And EDA was great. I mean, everybody did a good job. It was just really informative. So we need a motion to accept the 2024 Annual Report.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2024 Annual Report for the city of Wyndham.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Does anyone have any new business? Does anyone have any old business? How about council comments? Jim, do you have any council comments?
Probably don't wanna hear mine about that cabin. I told him how to do it, but...
Thank you, Jim. Jason, do you have any council comments?
Not tonight.
Dennis.
Well, I have to congratulate you. I don't know how many times I walked down to the arena and I saw how hard you were working down there and all the effort you were putting in, and seemed to be a never-ending job for you during the floods, so you did a great job. And also thank Tiffany for all the, all the things that she did. You know, in, in the media, we always had something from her. It was always great to hear from her, too. Did a great job.
Thank you, Dennis. Jenny, do you have anything?
Yeah, I too. I thank you guys and, you know, everyone that helped with the flood. And I think, you know, getting recognition from, you know, higher up for our small city of Wyndham that, you know, look at what people within our community do and the, you know, how they step up and make things happen. So it's great to see the recognition come to our small community.
I just wanna say thank you to all the hard-working department heads we have around here, our staff, our, our community. Just look, we're coming up on the new spring, and where we were that, that week of that flood and where we are today, it's, it's just completely turnaround. You wouldn't even know we had a flood if you wouldn't, wasn't from the community, because everything got cleaned up, everything got put where it needed to be. I know we're not 100% to hear from it, but we are, we are working forward and still going forward. And I just wanted to mention that it is spring coming up, and there was an accident today involving a car and a tractor. Please, please watch what you're doing out there, pay attention where you're driving, how you're driving, because farmers are getting out, they're getting out, but their equipment moving, they're moving the stuff from field to field. They're, they're doing the best they can, so we need to do our part and do the best we can by being vigilant for them guys, because without them guys, we don't eat, and as you can see, I like to eat. But no, all kidding aside, just take care of each other, because we are a wonderful community around here, and, and that flood proved it, that we all, not just one or two people, we all pulled together, and we pulled our boot strings up and we got this taken care of. But I just wanna say thank you for the citizens of Wyndham and Cottonwood County. Thank you very much.
And I, Steve, do you have anything right now?
Just thanks to you and Tiffany for all of your work and the recognition that you received. And with whatever we get for weather tomorrow, whether it be a little or a lot, please be safe.
Awesome. We talked about weather earlier. I get all like, ah, and then I, there's no reason to be like that. I think maybe it's been downgraded. I thank you, Tiffany, for everything you did. I'm really happy to see you get that award. I, big thanks to Kevin Reed for coming down to present those to us and to Paul Johnson for nominating us. I think he made three nominations and we were all awarded. We all got the recognition for it, and Kyle Polatsky was another key player in there, and everybody did. I mean, everyone made a difference. Like, an award like, like mine is for everybody that was down throwing sandbags, bringing water, cleaning up, doing everything. So I just feel like that should just say, like, "Community of Wyndham" instead of Hillary Mathis. But it is really nice to see. I think it shines a bright light on Wyndham. The other thing I would like to say is that I welcome the public always to any of these meetings. The department head meetings are open to the public, too, and they're really, oh, they're not, not the department head meeting, like Park and Rec. But, sorry, I said that wrong. Board commission meetings, Park and Rec, planning and zoning, library, they're all open to the public, and there's no better way to learn than to be there and to listen to them yourself. I've been going to everyone that I can possibly get to, and it's a really good way. And to the public, too, if you ever have questions, call us. I think we're all open to having conversations, come to the meetings, catch us in the street. Just if you wanna be a part of something, get involved, let us know. And I think this was a big one tonight. We did not make the time limit tonight. I mean, we made it, but we, we're not winning any awards like the police department with their annual report. So if that's it, we will call this meeting, adjourn this meeting by unanimous consent. So if that's it, we will call this meeting, adjourn this meeting by unanimous consent.